Well, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call this meeting to order for June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the York County School Board Special Meeting. Last week, we had a great, exciting week filled with graduation ceremonies, family celebrations for all of our graduates. The weather was a bit questionable at times, but we were able to proceed with all the ceremonies, and we appreciate all those involved in making some special memories for our graduates. Our seniors are now moving on to the next phase of their life, and we really do wish them much success in their future endeavors. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank some people within the division that put in a lot of hard work. Dr. Aaron Butler for coordinating the graduations at all the schools. Greg Dolak, Cheryl Parr, Doug Hartley, and Catherine Golf, just to name a few, and all the five high school principals at all the high schools and their staff and everybody that works for all these individuals. I mean, you had to put the stages together, move the stages, tear down, set up. There was a lot involved, and they did a wonderful job, and they should be praised for their, all their hard work that they've done. So now, as we get on to our virtual meeting, and I did mention Cheryl Parr, didn't I? Make sure I did cover her as well. So now, as we get our virtual meeting started, I'll begin with our roll call for board members, and they'll each state their remote location, and we'll start with Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, Brett Higginbotham, District Two, at one-one-one Ivy Arch, Yorktown, Virginia, two-three-six-nine-three.
All right, Ms. Gerrots.
Yes, Laurel Garretts, District Three, fourteen-eight-two, Walkers Mountain Road, Arrington, Virginia, two-two-nine-two-two.
That's a unique location. Thank you, Ms. Gerrots.
Happy Mountain.
There you go. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, Mark Schaefer, District Two. I mean, District One, what am I talking about? Gosh, one-fifteen Catawba Court, Williamsburg, Virginia, two-three-one-eight-five.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Myatt.
Sure. Good evening. Sean Myatt, District Five, one-zero-five Kiskeyak Turn, Yorktown, Virginia, two-three-six-nine-three.
Perfect. And I'm James Richardson from District Four at seven-ten Shippoint Road, Yorktown, two-three-six-nine-two. So now, all our board members are participating in a special meeting remotely through electronic communication pursuant to Resolution twenty-nine-ten authorized board meetings through electronic communication without a physically assembled quorum in compliance with the York County Ordinance twenty-eleven during the pendency of ordinance twenty-eleven in the COVID-nineteen pandemic emergency. We're streaming live video of our special meeting through the Division YouTube channel and YCSD TV. I'd also like to mention that our meeting agenda and documents are available by logging one to Board Docs through our YCSD website at yorkcountyschools.org. And I would like to now read the YCSD mission statement before we get started. The mission statement of the York County School Division is as follows. The mission of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions to the world.
So now, we're going to move on to our discussions, and the hot topic of discussion is our recovery, redesign, and restart. So I'm going to turn that over to you, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. This evening, we have one discussion topic that we're going to bring forward, and obviously, it's an extremely important one. You know, you mentioned that we just finished last week. Last, you know, we finally finished the school year and culminated in the graduations. And again, I certainly want to echo your remarks about the staff members and our principals and team, all of the maintenance folks, and I do want to shout out to the county staff members that came over and helped us as well, including the Sheriff's Office. So complete team effort. We're certainly appreciative of everyone's effort. We've received a lot of emails, and congratulations and thank you, so to speak, for all the work. So we appreciate the community recognizing how much work it took to pull something like that off. So now, we're going to quickly pivot to preparing for next school year. So Dr. Carroll is going to share some information with you tonight. As you know, last week, the governor released his plan, so Dr. Carroll is going to touch on that plan a little bit, but he's also going to review some information from the committee that he is leading. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll, our Chief Operations Officer.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Chairman Richardson, members of the board. So here we are with an overview of a school restart in the fall. So first of all, just to take you back, I know we've briefed you on occasion about where we're at, but we've had a team working over the last eight weeks or so. It was exactly the same time we started working on our one-to-one initiative, and at some point, these two things are going to dovetail together. And working on the planning for how are we going to look when we restart in the fall, because the governor warned us at that time that we needed to be ready for any eventuality, depending on whatever phase that we were in at the time. And so we started brainstorming sessions and talking about what the fall might look like based on where the Virginia Forward Plan was at that time, because that's all we had to work on. So we were definitely hampered by the fact that we didn't have a specific state guidance for schools, which we were informed would be coming later, and whatever parameters would be placed on us, because this is an extremely complex problem to look at. When you look at all the facets of schooling, and I think, I think everybody recognizes how many ways schools touch people's lives and how much of a linchpin we are to things happening in our economy and in our communities the way they're supposed to. And so when you're looking at all the programming we do and how we, what a central role we fill, this is a really, really complex problem. So about two weeks ago, we had done a lot of group brainstorming and looking at all the facets we thought might pop up. And so about two weeks ago, we broke into subgroups and really started to consider additional details based on the Virginia Forward Plan and reopening documents that we've seen from other states, and lots of organizations, think tanks have put things out. And so we were combing through those and just trying to think about what kind of things would be coming in the state guidance and just doing a lot of brainstorming and thinking and putting things down a little bit on paper so that we'd be ready when a state plan came. So last Tuesday, the governor released their recovery, redesign, and restart plan, and it's a nice-sized document. I've got my copy right here. Hundred-and-thirty-five pages, about fifty of them are in appendices. It lists the facets of school operations that we need to be thinking about. It basically put it in three big buckets of school operations, student-staff reports, I'm sorry, supports, and instruction. And across those three areas, guidance for about forty-two subareas across four phases, mostly across three that everybody's used to kind of the three-phase plan, but also tacking on or mentioning that there is an area of time that's going to be beyond Phase Three that I believe is before we have a full vaccine, but what they call the new normal. And so that was an addition there. So I just want to walk you through a little bit of that state document that, of course, is posted on the governor's website, it's DOE's website, and if we don't have it up yet, it will be soon, and definitely will be part of this presentation. But just to walk you through some of the things that we have, just to give you an idea of the complexity. So it first of all starts out on page thirteen, really talking and emphasizing about equity, that one of the things that we know is that this crisis is going to hit people unevenly and that however, you know, this past few months has really been just kind of surviving and doing what we could to do the best we could with the resources we had. But as we look into next year, it's got to be about new learning, and it's got to be as equitable as possible, given our constraints. The next big section was page fifth, or it starts on page fifteen, and it talks about phasing the reopenings. And I've talked about Phases One, Two, and Three that align to Virginia Forward, and then mentions a few times about beyond Phase Three. So under school operations, some of the things you have to think about is, is what are the mitigation strategies? There's no way we're going to be able to ensure everybody's health, just as you couldn't do it in any place where anybody is interacting. So these are about mitigation strategies. How can we limit any spread and communal spread of the disease? What are we going to do about our health services? What are we going to do differently with our school nurses and clinic staff to make sure that people are separated? We can still get well care without putting anybody in any harm's way. Then it goes through the things that people have probably been thinking about, physical and social distancing. What kind of cleaning measures are we going to take in different phases? What does transportation look like? Because that's a place where a lot of students gather in one place. School nutrition, we've been feeding people all through the summer, and what will that look like when we return? Before and after-school activities, you know, auxiliary programs that we run like Champions and Boys and Girls Club and that type of thing. And then, of course, forefront of a lot of people's minds is athletics and extracurriculars, and I'll come back to that in a little bit. And then, human resources, what kind of resources do we need for our people and our staff? And that's just the school operations. So then, we move on to student and staff supports. So there's, what do we do with remote learning and telework, which is really kind of the balance of where we're going to find ourselves, I think, and whatever plan we, that we present is going to have to have a little bit of both, and especially for those of our staff and students that are vulnerable, most vulnerable? And how are we going to balance that to get to a schedule that works for everybody? You see attention paid to social and emotional well-being, mental health supports, just supports for students in general, social and emotional learning. How are we going to deal with our students with disabilities and our vulnerable learners? And if we could move on to the next page. And then, school discipline, which, of course, will look a little different. And then, you get to the third spoke of the wheel, and that's instruction, which really is a good part of this plan. And how does teaching and learning look? What kind of considerations do we have to have at the division level and the school level? What are the common models that we have for what we anticipate would be some blended learning, depending on what phase you're in? And then, of course, what is digital learning? And that's where our one-to-one initiative would fold in. And so that's, and it goes on one more page, I believe, where the appendices, a lot of resources for people and some backup documentation to the state plan. I want to share three additional pages with you. If we could fast-forward to page nineteen. And here you see, I just wanted to, this comes at the tail end of kind of a summary of what you'd see at Phases One, Two, and Three, and you see that citation of beyond Phase Three, where they talk about things being a new normal. So I did want to cite that. And then, if we move on to page twenty-seven, because it gives us a number of examples of things that we'll be looking at across the phases, a matrix. And, you know, some of the things are exactly the same. If you go just past halfway down, you've got health screenings and temperature checks, and you can see that, at least the wording here in the summary is all the same, but there is some detailed work that still needs to be done that might be different across the phases. And right below that, you see the same summary for face coverings, but there, too, might be, might be some differentiation in the detail. But then, you look at something like the bottom of the page, athletics, where Phase One, it's completely prohibited. Two, it's limited, it's limited, and we're working on that right now. But in Phase Three, that's something else I want to highlight. This isn't a comprehensive report. There are still things that are evolving, and when you see at the bottom of the page, Phase Three, there's still a lot that has to still be determined. And then, when you go up to the second row, you see that gathering limits, Phase Three are still to be determined. And some of that may just be that it's, the state hasn't made a final determination, and some of that may be that it's up to local control. And we see, we see some of those examples as you go through the report, but just wanted to show you where, what a matrix looks like and how it could, it looked a little different based on the three phases. So now, we'll advance to page thirty-one through thirty-three, and I want to just give you an example, and this is probably the shortest example I could come up with, and that's transportation, but that doesn't mean there's not a lot to consider here. So with each of the, each of the sections, they'll talk about something like transportation here, and there's a little bit of an intro statement and very often some sort of citing of CDC guidelines or something else. And here, you can see the bus capacity limits in Phase One. It has to be distancing and a ten-person limit. You get to Phase Two and Three, six-foot social distancing, which severely hampers the, you know, the capacity of the bus, and we'll have to work through that, and how many people can we actually get bused to a building under those conditions? When you look to the next page, then it gives you a series of questions to work through. And in transportation, there's only fifteen questions, but these are very specific questions, and our plan needs to be able to address all of it. Now, we'll probably be able to release some sort of recommendation to the superintendent that can be distributed to the public before we've answered all these questions. There will need to be just some critical path that needs to be determined, but by the time we open school, we have to have all of these questions answered and be prepared with the plan of action. And then, on page thirty-three, just at the top, you'll see every section usually ends with some sort of resources for that department or that committee to look through, and those are links to various things. So that's, transportation was one of the shortest ones, and so I just wanted to give you an example of what these sections would look through. Transportation took about a page, but instructions about thirty pages. So we have a lot to go through. So if we can go back to the slideshow now, I'll talk about next steps before I take your questions. So right now, we are working through Phases Two and Three concurrently to do the planning, but our most time-sensitive work is to go ahead. There are four plans, I believe, that we have to submit to the state for them to sign off on, and the health plan is the one that we need to get to first, because we know there's going to be excitement about getting back to athletic practices, at least for some conditioning, and we can't do that until we have a health plan. And then, working with our partners at York County Parks and Rec so that they can have summer camps, because those are allowed under Phase Two under some circumstances. But concurrently, we're also working on Phase Three, where we now, now that we have the plan, we divvy up into subgroups, and there's even subgroups on those subgroups, and they're reviewing the governor's plan very, very specifically, trying to make sure that we understand all the compliance that is necessary and each component that we have to have planned for over the three to four phases. And then, we're going to reconcile that against the work we've already done, because we may have anticipated an awful lot of this, so it'll either confirm our thinking or we'll need to change what we'd already thought. And then, last, we will be surveying our staff and our, and our, our community, because there's undoubtedly going to be some data that is needed in order for us to make a final recommendation to the superintendent, which then can be, then can be put out to the public as far as our plan for the fall. So that's all I had, and I am ready for any of your questions.
So, Dr. Carroll, what I think I'm going to do is I have a quick statement I'd like to make, but then I'm going to do each board member individually in case they have questions, since this is kind of a big topic here. And I know a lot of families are anxious to hear what our reopening plans are, and I certainly am as well, but what they need to understand is we just got this document from the state last week. There's still a lot to work, work through and how the complexity of it. You can't emphasize the complexity of it enough. You know, I've talked to parents and the public that, you know, in passing, and there's those groups that want to go back to school, they're ready to go back to school, and they don't care what. There's other, other parents that are concerned about sending their child back to school. But we have to not only look out for the students, but we have to look out for our staff, in case we have staff that are immunocompromised and that sort of thing as well. So is there any statements you'd like to make in addition to that, Dr. Shandor, before I turn it over to board members for comments and questions? You're muted, Dr. Shandor. You're muted.
Thank you. I called you Dr. Richardson. Sorry.
Oh, man, and we missed it.
No, Mr. Richardson, I think you captured it very well, and I think it is important for our public to know that, you know, I've received a number of emails from a lot of families related to next year, wanting to know what our plan is. Clearly, you can see in that document that it is a comprehensive report. It's complex. There are a lot of issues that need to be worked out. I appreciate the work that Dr. Carroll and his team has done. We've had a number of principals on that committee, as well as members from a number of different departments. As he mentioned, they're doing some subcommittee work now, so it's going to take us some time to comb through this, but the emails I've gotten from parents are really on both sides. One is, you know, regardless, you need to take kids back, you know, get them all back to school, and we certainly understand that and hear that. I've got three kids at home. I'm ready for them all to go back, too. But on the other side, you have folks that, you know, are really concerned about going back, whether or not it's going to be safe and all those types of things. So, you know, we appreciate the state's guidance. We have a lot of work and information to continue to come through. So once we get, once the team gets ready to make a recommendation, we'll certainly, you know, brief the board and, and, you know, get all of our communications. Dr. Carroll, you mentioned the survey, et cetera, correct?
Right.
So, you know, we certainly don't want to do this in isolation. We want to get some feedback from our staff. We want to get some feedback from our families, and then, you know, then make a good decision moving forward. You know, fortunately for us, we've, we had a situation early in the year over at Crafton, and, you know, after, you know, take that and times it by, you know, nineteen schools and all these other issues, we'll certainly do our due diligence in making sure that we provide a timely information, but also put together a plan that is going to make sure that our staff and our kids are safe when they return.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So, Ms. Gerrots, are there any questions or comments you'd like to make?
I just wanted to add one comment, is we kind of know that you can't make everybody happy. In the survey, is the survey going to encompass, you know, do you have transportation to school? Are you ready to come back? Are those the kind of questions it's going to be asking?
There, there's been questions a lot about whether you're able to come back to school. I mean, some people are vulnerable and can't, whether you'd prefer not to be, and there may be some other things. We may be asking about childcare. We may be asking about your, your indication of whether you'd be interested in riding the bus. As a, as a side note, we are working towards a track ridership. In the past, we haven't done that, and track ridership actually will make us much more efficient, but that will require our community member, or our school members, to actually sign up for a bus ride. So you're, you're registering your, your, for a seat on a bus, and we haven't done that in the past, and that might be under a separate survey, but it won't be a survey. It'll be you, communication out, and people have to, actually have to sign up to be on a bus.
Okay. My other question is about staffing. Do you envision, I'm just thinking, if we're having extra cleaning protocols and those kinds of things, is this going to be something that over the summer, we're going to have to figure out that we need to hire more people in certain areas to cover, or?
That will certainly be something that we talk about, but I don't know until we know the scale of it, if it's something that we can do. It's probably going to require more of everybody to keep the schools clean when you're talking about how many people and how frequently you're cleaning. It may mean other staff need to pitch in.
Okay. I know at one point, our division was using clean products. Have we kind of looked at our products that we're using for cleaning to make sure that they're killing what they need to kill?
Yes, we're, we're good on that. We looked at that last spring, and our products are up to the job. It's just a matter of the frequency of the use.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you, Ms. Gerrots. So now, we're going to move on to Mr. Higginbotham. I'm just going to go across the screen here, so.
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions at this time. I just appreciate you guys trying to anticipate some of the things even before the recommendation came from, you know, Dr. Lane and from the governor and everything, and just curious as to how we're going to balance, you know, the blended, you know, option with the possibility to have students in the building and then some students who can't get in the building or teachers who can't because of immunocompromised situations. And then, with athletics and things like that, I'm curious to see how that's going to work with both crowds, bands, cheerleaders, also doing things like that once the games actually get back. And I think the VHSL is going to offer some guidance later this month about that, too, I believe. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I just have one thing that might, we might be able to investigate. Seeing how we've had the lowest number of cases of ninety-three in the entire county since things started, and only Matthews and Gloucester and Pococin are lower than us, would there be any chance that we could get a variance?
I believe variance is a possibility, and that's, we're going to look at all options. The, we just have to look at what we're limited by to bringing everybody back is maybe one option, as Dr. Shandor said, but there are limitations, and even with that, there are mitigations. We haven't explored the variance yet, and so I need to make sure that that's still in play.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any, anything else?
No, that's it. That was it.
Okay. Good. All right. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, I'd just like to recommend, you know, because, again, this is frankly beyond the division's community-wide issue and will impact us community-wide or even regionally, is to ensure that we remain, you know, conferencing regionally with, with the other divisions. I think that's going to be critical, and I know you're leaning forward on that. We greatly appreciate that. The other piece is to ensure that we do include our community partners when we're ready for that step, because as we all know, this is going to take some real creative solutioning. That's going to include, again, our partners as it did with, with Crafton High. And then, one other fine, final recommendation is I'd like to have a comprehensive work session. This is, this is such a complex issue. At some point, I do think we need to get together as a collective and look at, look through this in great detail, you know, as we continue through the, through the summer and as the division analyzes this and moves forward in its planning.
Well, thank you, Mr. Myatt. I would just say, since you mentioned regional, certainly, we are trying to confer with those that are around us, but also, one of the things that we ran up against with the Crafton situation is our regional programs, both those that we offer, like the School of the Arts and the, but the regional programs like Governor's School and the New Horizons is going to factor into our ability to, to provide services, so that those will all be accounted for.
Yes, and we have a preliminary discussion with, with some of our divisions this Thursday, so we are, we are beginning those initial discussions. You know, that, to me, you know, our peninsula group of superintendents, you know, coming up with sharing and stealing ideas from each other and making sure that we're communicating so that we're, you know, sort of on the same page is extremely important. There's, there's a lot. This is a big decision that we're getting ready to make as we launch back into the school year. No one would love to go back to school full speed than, than my, than our team, as board members, as you know. We would much rather just say, everybody go back. That would make it a lot easier for, for many people and our families included. However, we are going to have to continue to dissect this plan, look into the variance piece, et cetera, and we're certainly open to coming back and providing the board with additional information later on. What I would, what I wouldn't recommend would be setting a date on that, because it's taking time. Takes a lot of time. We have principals heavily involved with this. We have some counselors involved. We have, you know, IT, a number of different groups. So I would hate to say, hey, let's meet on this particular date. What I'd like to do is give the team the opportunity to work through it, flush it out as, as far as they can, and then, you know, share that with the board. You know, we could do two-on-two sessions, and then if a- Um, you know, we could do two-on-two sessions, and then if a, you know, board meetings you needed to, to further dive that into it, absolutely.
And Dr. Shandor, to add on to that, uh, that should not be interpreted as we want to put this off as late as possible because we don't, our families need to plan for whatever contingencies. And also, we have planning, I mean, we can't really do any scheduling for the fall until we've decided on a route we're taking. So, uh, we, we have demands, planning demands, that we need to answer these as soon as we can, but we want to make sure that we do our due diligence.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll, thank you for that report, uh, very comprehensive, and I, I think we've covered a lot. But thank you for all the, um, hard work you put into that, I know it's been very time consuming.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna move on to our financial matters, and Ms. Gerroth, would you discuss financial matters? You're still muted, Ms. Gerroth. There you go.
Sorry. Uh, consideration of approval of claims certified for payment. Now, we have claims certified for payment for the month of May, uh, two thousand twenty. Significant expenditures for May. We have instructional related expenditures totaled approximately two hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred eighty and included payments to New Horizons, Thomas Nelson, Will Van Etation, Schaefer Evaluation and Book Source. We have payments for technology-related items totaled approximately two hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred fifty and included payments to Computer Cloud Warehouse, Apple, Citrix and VA Business Systems. Uh, payments related to administration totaled eleven thousand one hundred and included a payment to the, uh, equal, uh, for workers' comp expenses. Payments related to food service totaled eighty-eight thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and included a payment to Sedexo for food service operations. Payments related to capital projects totaled, uh, one million two hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and thirty-two and included payments to Heartland Construction, Comfort Systems, Ship Communication, uh, for Texo Electric Power, Inc., Mid-Atlantic and ACES. Um, B, we have consideration of approval of financial reports for May twenty twenty. We have significant changes related to the operating budget for May revenues. We've got local, local revenue for May twenty twenty is up by more than a hundred and two thousand, primarily as resolved tuition received related to the early college program. State revenue through May twenty twenty is up more than two point three nine million when compared to May two thousand nineteen. The increase is due to approved state funding increases for FY twenty and increases in student enrollment. Uh, for expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately two point six million higher in May twenty twenty than in two thousand nineteen. And this is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for FY twenty. We have significant changes related to the food service budget for revenues and expenditures. Food service revenue through May twenty twenty has decreased by approximately four hundred and forty-third, four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars when compared to May two thousand nineteen. The decrease in revenue is a result from the closure of schools. Food service expenditures are approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars less in May twenty twenty than in two thousand nineteen. The decrease in expenditures is also a result from the school closures. Then have consideration of approval of a resolution twenty dash thirty, resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution twenty dash thirty requires the board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than fifty thousand dollars. There are two items on the resolution for approval. Number one, increase to the existing contract with Heartland Construction in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand for additional work related to the Grafton Complex fire. Number two, Cintas Fire Protection in the amount of seventy thousand for division-wide fire protection and sprinkler inspections. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve financial matters as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Gerroth, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for that second, are there any other questions? There are no other questions, Ms. Ford, if you will pull the board, please.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Garroth and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve financial matters as listed. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Garroth?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we're gonna move into our consent calendar, and I'm gonna go over these briefly. Uh, we have approval of personnel actions, approval of changes to the student handbook and conduct, conduct code for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We have the authorization for, uh, to file an application for grant funding, Title One Part A, grant funding for Title Two Part A, grant funding for Title Three Part A, and grant funding for Title Four Part A. Also, the approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual progress report for financial statement for York River Academy. And, uh, another one to authorize James Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, Andy Skinner, Chief Academic Officer, William Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, or Anthony Vladu, Chief Human Resources Officer, to sign for the Division Superintendent in the absence of the Division Superintendent, and that would start on July first and follow through for the year. Approve the agreement between the York County School Board of York County and the York Coast and Sheriff's Office to authorize the superintendent execute the agreement for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. That's usually, that's for the SROs, correct, uh, Dr. Shandor?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the Special Education Advisory Committee, the CAC, members for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Approval of minutes for a regular meeting for May eighteenth, twenty twenty, a special meeting on June first, twenty twenty. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendars listed?
I move to approve the consent calendars listed.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Myatt, I think you got the second and first, um, so Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Ms. Garroth?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The consent calendar was passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, now we can move into our action items. Resolution twenty dash thirty-one, resolution affirming our commitment to inclusive, to an inclusive school environment. Um, this was something that, um, I initially drafted, um, a couple of other board members, um, submitted their input, and with all their input, we put it all together, ran it through our county attorney. Um, and this is the resolution that we, we have. The resolution says that we, as a board, developed with the assistance of the Virginia School Boards Association, and I like to read the resolution in its entirety, due to the importance of the message that we're, we're portraying here. Whereas the York County School Board is deeply saddened and concerned by the tragic, tragic events that have occurred across the country and Virginia. Whereas the York County School Board is expressly opposed to racism, bigotry, hate and violence in any form. And whereas the York County School Board is committed to actively working against the damaging effects of racism and to ensuring the constitutional rights of every employee and student within our school division. And whereas we are committed to engaging our community in meaningful and honest conversation about racial inequity, to build alliances and those committed to justice for all, and to work together to support our shared conviction against racism. And whereas all people, people of all races and different backgrounds contribute to the school division's strengths and wellbeing. And whereas the York County School Board will continue to retain and recruit minority educators. And whereas the York County School Board will continue to be honest and transparent with internal and external stakeholders, and will continue to build on the culture of trust within our schools and community. Whereas we are steadfast in our commitment to foster an inclusive educational environment where every student, teacher, support professional, parent and community member is treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore be it resolved that the County School Board of York County on this fifteenth day of June, twenty twenty, that we stand against racism to affirm our commitment to fighting for racial and economic justice, gender equality and human and civil rights for all. So is there a motion in the second to approve Resolution twenty dash thirty-one, affirming our commitment to the inclusive school board, uh, school environment?
I'll move to approve, uh, motion twenty dash thirty-one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schaefer, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gerroth, for that second, Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mrs. Garroth to approve Resolution twenty dash thirty-one. Ms. Garroth?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Now we have the approval, uh, the, to approve the transfer funds between major categories. Dr. Shandor, would you share additional details on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, who is gonna cover this topic, Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, uh, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. Um, this, then, tonight, there's two items that, uh, we'll, we'll ask you to approve. Uh, the first being is the transfer of appropriation between major categories. Uh, this is something that, um, the board has to approve if, if for, and since we came up short in one of our major categories, we couldn't overspend it without the board's approval and transferring that appropriation to cover that, um, overage. Um, where we stand right now, we're, we're, we're positive in all of our accounts. However, um, we are, um, anticipating, uh, that our sales tax revenue could come in higher than what I had initially projected that we would lose as a result of the economic, um, shutdown, uh, for April and part of May. So this just puts us in a place, if, if there's, if the sales tax money comes in, uh, higher, then we'll have some funds at end of year to, uh, to use for, um, particularly for technology or for a school bus. And the second item is, um, we're, we're transferring cash from the Workers' Compensation Fund to the Health Insurance Dental Fund, and this is just to ensure that our end-of-year balances are sufficient in case our, um, uh, our claims exceed our current projections. And that's all I have for you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Bowen on those transfer funds? If there are no questions, is there a motion in the second to approve the, um, to approve the transfer of funds between major categories?
I move to approve the transfer of funds between major categories.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gerroth, Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Ms. Garroth to transfer, to approve the transfer of funds between major categories. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Garroth?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion was approved five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we have policy readings, um, these are expedited policies that, uh, we're reading the second reading of IGBGA. So Dr. Shandor, do you have comments regarding this policy?
I do, Ms. Richardson, I'm gonna let Dr. Vladu, um, he is gonna cover this topic for Ms. Skinner, uh, this evening related to this, so I'll turn it over to, uh, Dr. Vladu.
Mr. Richardson, members of the board and Dr. Shandor, so tonight we bring before you policy IGBGA, which governs online courses and virtual programs for a second reading. This is for an expedited approval process, uh, because as you, uh, are aware, summer school will start, um, soon. There are no substantive changes to this practice, and, uh, it provides additional clarification to students and our families. Essentially, it differentiates between tuition responsibility as it relates to summer school and the regular school year. So provides the clarification that our folks need. So at this time, um, I'm available to take any questions you might have.
So basically, no substantial changes, just clarification?
Exactly.
Okay. Hearing no questions, is there a, a motion, uh, to approve the second reading of policy IGBA?
I move that we approve the second reading of policy IGBGA.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Gerroth and Mr. Schaefer, for that motion in the second, so Ms. Ford, if you will pull the board, please.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Garroth and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve policy IGBGA. Mrs. Garroth?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have the second reading of revisions of school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, and I've had some discussions with Ms. Berry on this, this topic over the last year, so, um, I knew we were looking at redoing it, but I'll let you explain it, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Richardson, and I'll do my best Melanie Berry, uh, invitation. So, um, we're bringing to you tonight approval of second reading of revisions of school policy, BDD, which is the electric, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. So, most recently, an update occurred in May twenty twenty, uh, to incorporate increased latitude in conducting electronic met, meetings during a state of emergency such as we've been in with COVID nineteen, uh, the pandemic that has long-term effects on the continuity of government. The newest VSBA draft policy adds, or as otherwise permitted by law, and the reference to the Acts of Assembly. Prior to this last update, an earlier revision condensed the two circumstances in which a board member can participate electronically when a quorum of the board is physically assembled and tracked the language used in the Code of Virginia with more specificity. For example, the wording is changed for when a board member may participate electronically from being due to an emergency to a personnel ma- or a personal matter, excuse me. Additionally, the limitation of only participating electronically in two meetings per year due, due to an emergency is continued as, as applied to a personal matter, but the alternative option of participating remotely for up to twenty-five percent of the meetings is removed. Further changes include adding the definition of electronic communication to the policy, removing requirements for dissemination of agenda packets, voting and recording of minutes that are included elsewhere in school board policy, and removing provisions that were only applicable to state public bodies. Due the, due to the recent events related to COVID nineteen pandemic, an additional option for when a quorum is not physically assembled has been added to allow additional flexibility when the County Board of Supervisors enacts a continuity of government ordinance pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen, uh, dot two dash fourteen thirteen. So the recommendation is the adoption of this revised policy, BDD, the electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, per Melanie Berry, Deputy County Attorney.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and in my conversations with her, our, uh, policy was very strict, and, um, the state code was easier to, um, to conform to. And this revision will basically conform to state code better, uh, as well as from my understanding. So are there any additional questions? Okay, here, none, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the revisions of school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations?
Move we adopt the revisions of school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham for that second, and Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board as well, please.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the second reading of school board policy, BDD. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garroth?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, and not that all of our topics tonight weren't important, uh, but I think one of the biggest, uh, important items was talking about the reopening plan, um, to at least, uh, let the citizens and, and families in the county know that we're diligently working on that, um, that we need to come to a resolution on, on something ourselves, uh, soon from what, um, Dr. Carroll was explaining. So our next, uh, regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, August twenty-fourth, but details will be confirmed as we get close to that date. Um, and I just want everybody to have a great summer, but I want to also mention that we may have a meeting in July. Just because we don't have a date, we don't know if we're gonna need one, or if we're gonna have one. Um, there may be, uh, Dr. Shandor may be able to call each board member individually on what the, the work of the committee and the decisions that have come up with, uh, that have, have, have been decided. Um, but the board may have a meeting if needed to discuss any additional, um, things on that plan as well. So that, that's still open, uh, that's not closed, our definite next meeting is on August. Um, there's possibly, we could have one in July as well. Uh, but our next one is scheduled, we do have slated for August twenty-fourth. Um, so just everyone have a great summer, everyone stay safe, and, um, good luck to y'all. Thank you. Meetings adjourn.